Councilwoman Perkins-Gustafson. Councilman Question.
Here.
Councilman Jackett.
Here.
Councilman Groga.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Svenja. Councilman Goldman.
Here.
Councilman Maza.
Here.
President Gonzalez.
Here. Okay, well now move on to new business.
Letter dated July 5, 2012 from the Honorable Mayor advising that subject to confirmation of your honorable body he here with reappoints Mr. Jose Capitao for 71 North Avenue Elizabeth to serve as a member of the Elizabeth Housing Authority for a term of five years.
Any comments? Here you go. Put it on.
Letter dated August 3, 2012 from the Honorable Mayor requesting to amend the resolution dated July 24, 2012 regarding the appointment of a public defender for the Elizabeth in his report to reflect the addition of Lisa A. Perez to law offices of Stephen E. Gettrick-Bertler, Walz, New Jersey for the period July 1, 2012 to June 30, 2013.
Any comments?
Letter dated July 3, 2012 from the Business Administrator requesting that your honorable body consider authorizing RNG Express Transport to operate as an autobus pursuant to chapter 5.16 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth traveling from North Brunswick and Monroe, New Jersey having six autobuses in operation that will be parked at 676 Pennsylvania Avenue.
This item had previously been held because of where they had been parking the vans. Now they've found an appropriate place. So, any comments?
No.
Let it go.
Letter dated July 11, 2012 from the Business Administrator advising that being satisfied that an emergency did exist recommends the award of a contract to Rana Construction, Inc., North New Jersey for the immediate demolition of 542 South Park Street in an amount of $12,800.
Any comments?
Very quickly, Mr. President, I'm so happy to see this is taken care of by that so many people that have built it. And because of buildings such as this, you know, there's things around, there's squatters in there, and the fire started, affected their home next door, and it just stayed there.
All right, so you're happy. He's happy. He's happy. Any other comments? Put it on.
Letter dated July 11, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Rico Americas Corporation, Pine Brook, New Jersey for the maintenance of other security photographs for the period July 1, 2012 to June 30, 2013 in an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Any comments?
Letter dated July 16, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Bayway Lumber, Linden, New Jersey for the purchase of lumber and associated materials for various departments for the period July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013 at a cost not to exceed $200,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated July 16, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Fire Fighter I LLC, Sparta, New Jersey for mass sea burn meters and service air tanks for the police department for the period May 17, 2012 through May 16, 2014 at a cost not to exceed $100,000.
Any comments?
Letter dated July 16, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Papermore, Inc., East Hanover, New Jersey and WB Mason Company, Inc., Sepulgate, New Jersey for the purchase of copy paper for the period July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013 in an amount not to exceed $40,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated July 20, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Allied Fire and Safety Equipment Company, Neptune, New Jersey for the purchase of fire sprinkler services for the period June 17, 2012 through June 16, 2014 in an amount not to exceed $140,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated July 20, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Matthews Security, Elizabeth, for the purchase of security system services for the period of June 15, 2012 through June 14, 2014 in an amount not to exceed $40,000.
Any comments?
No comments. Letter dated July 28, 26, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Public Service Electric and Gas Company, Somerset, New Jersey for the purchase of a new electric service and the installation of underground electric conduit and cable for the new traffic light at North Broad Street and Westfield Avenue in the amount of $3,850.95.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated July 31, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending to renew the contract with Highway Service Corp., Elizabeth, for towing and road service for municipal vehicles for a period of one year commencing September 13, 2012 through September 12, 2013 with the option to renew for a third year under the same terms and conditions as the current contract.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated August 1, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to National Terminal, Inc., North New Jersey for the purchase of fuel oil for the Public Works Marina for the period August 1, 2012 through October 31, 2012 at a cost not to exceed $75,000.
Any comments?
Just one. What did we spend last year telling you to find out?
I'll find out.
Thank you.
I think we took about $200,000.
Any other comments?
I think we took in a couple hundred thousand. I'll check. Of course.
Okay. Put it on.
Letter dated August 1, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Mallard Ford, Lincoln Mercury, North Brunswick, New Jersey for the purchase of automotive and light duty truck parts for various departments for the period July 26, 2012 through August 14, 2013 in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Any comments?
Letter dated August 1, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Associated Auto Parts, Linden, New Jersey for the purchase of automotive and light duty truck parts for various departments for the period July 26, 2012 through August 14, 2013 in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
Any comments?
Letter dated August 1, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Biwise Auto Parts, Rockport, New Jersey for the purchase of automotive and light duty truck parts for various departments for the period July 26, 2012 through August 14, 2013 in an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Any comments?
One look. All right, now we finish. We've got four of these still. Find out this is over half a million dollars. Find out how much you spent last year. We've got all brain charts.
How many you say? Four. Two.
Just four. $75,000 from Ford. $150,000 from Associated Auto Parts. $100,000 from Biwise Auto Parts. Find out how much you spent last year. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. President.
Sure. Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. This one and the last one look identical, except for a different vendor.
It's a different vendor. There are four different vendors.
But we don't use all the money, which is...
That's why I want to know how much you've been spending.
All right, put it on.
Letter dated August 2, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to AAM Motor Sales doing business as Jersey City Ford, Jersey City, for auto parts and accessories for light duty vehicles for various departments for the period August 1, 2012 through June 25, 2014 at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated August 2, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Independent Constructors, Bridgewater, New Jersey for cleaning inspections, monitoring of oil waters, separators, and above and underground tanks at various locations and Department of Environmental Protection compliance for the period August 1, 2012 through July 31, 2013 at a cost not to exceed $70,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated August 2, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Motorola Communications and Electronics, Inc., Boarding Town, New Jersey for the purchase of a service agreement for communications, infrastructure, and maintenance on all portable radios for the police and fire departments at a cost of $104,528.46.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated August 3, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Herman Miller, Care of BFI, Parsippany, New Jersey in the amount of $15,390.82. Timble National, Jasper, Indiana in the amount of $9,426.60. And BFI, Parsippany, New Jersey in the amount of $4,761.30 for the purchase of furniture for the police roll call report writing room totaling $29,578.72.
Any comments?
Mr. President, I need to be a few. Thank you.
Take care first.
Take care. Good night.
Good night. Letter dated August 7, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Concord Engineering, Worries, New Jersey for energy consulting services for the period August 28, 2012 to August 27, 2012. No. It has to be 13, I'm assuming, for, okay, at a cost not to exceed $100,000.
$100,000. Yeah, 13.
Yeah, maybe something, but I'll have to check.
Okay.
Letter dated August 7, 2012 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Horizon Select Services, Inc., Piscataway, New Jersey for a Sentinel Patriot 911 system, including materials, installation, software, support, and maintenance commencing August 28, 2012 at a cost not to exceed $1,2,687.76.
Any comments?
The appropriate...
Letter dated July 11, 2012 from the City Attorney requesting to amend the resolution dated June 24, 2012, awarding the contract for assignment of legal counsel for court litigation when LaPorte, Bundy, Vary, and Zella have conflict of interest for the period of July 1, 2012 to June 30, 2013, specifically to include to that list Edwin R. Matthews, Esquire, Orno, and Kenyon Counselors at Law Summit and Cherokee.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated August 6, 2012 from the City Attorney recommending awarding a contract to Quastella Associates of Jupiter, Florida to provide utility rate setting, valuation, and management services for publicly and privately owned water and wastewater utilities to adequately address the city's concerns and to serve as the city's expert during litigation for the period August 28, 2012 through August 27, 2013 in an amount not to exceed $40,000.
Any comments? Councilor Maza.
Were you only in litigation with this company or there was another company too?
No, this is litigation with Michael Spoons. He's gonna be one of our consultants. Festival.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the conversation.
No, the question...
The question was whether there was other litigation.
Right. And is there?
No. This is the sewer utility.
Yeah, there are two separate cases, but they're both mentioned. One is the Petty's case, there is the Michael's case.
If you look at the page all the way in the back, they'll be paying $3.35 an hour. Hour you rate for the principal one, associate 2.70, director of engineering 2.20, 2.30, whatever you pass it correctly.
That's what they get.
That's what they get.
And it's from the wrong business.
Excuse me.
She's not exorbitant.
I went to the wrong profession, haven't I?
Yeah, Frank, you're right. It's in the right one.
Any comments?
Okay.
Letter dated June 26, 2012 from the Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the tax collector to cancel, disallow senior citizens' deductions for tax year 2011 in the amount of $750.
Any comments?
Letter dated August 7, 2012 from the Chief Financial Officer advising that transfers for the 2012 state fiscal year municipal sewer utility budgets may be necessary.
Any comments?
Letter dated August 7, 2012 from the Chief Financial Officer advising their temporary emergency appropriations for the 2013 state fiscal year municipal sewer utility budgets may be necessary.
Any comments?
Letter dated August 7, 2012 from the Chief Financial Officer advising that dedication by rider resolutions may be necessary.
Any comments?
Another one for the first, eh?
Letter dated August 7, 2012 from the Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider approving a resolution determining the form and other details of its note relating to the interim financing trust loan program of the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust to be issued in the principal amount of up to $2,600,000 and providing for the issuance and sale of such note to the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust and authorizing the execution and delivery of such note by the City of Elizabeth in favor of the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust, I mean, infrastructure, all pursuant to the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust interim financing state fiscal year 2013 trust loan program.
Any comments?
Yeah, I do. Tony, what does this mean? Does that mean we don't have to bond the money ourselves?
We have a bond ordinance itself. What this provides is an interim loan at no interest cost. Now, next, until, during a period of construction, okay, which starts now through like maybe next spring, when it goes into the permanent financing next April or May, we'll be paying maybe 1% or less of the total...
So, does that mean that we don't...
We don't pay any money. We get this money upfront. They're gonna be funding us $2.6 million.
My question is, what happened with the fact that we bonded that?
No, no. Bonding just gives you the authority to go on and get a loan.
Okay. This is the avenue used?
This is the avenue we use. We use New Jersey infrastructure all the time because...
Which is a better rate.
It's less than half, and in some cases it's been no interest. Now, the interim loan, again, this is gonna be paying off that $2.6 million as we go with the construction. We're going for the permanent financing in April and May, just the 2013 year. It should be less than maybe 1%.
Councilor Maza.
Yeah, man, did you get in touch with the gas company? Because I know there's an area that needs to be also worked out. Maybe now that they're doing excavation work, should be the right time for them to get involved with the work.
I don't know.
Tony, you're on time?
Yeah. I'll talk to the Petty one.
Yeah, talk to the Petty. Because I'm sure that once we get done, then they gotta start over again. So, why doing the job twice? You could do it one time and eliminate.
Because the gas company doesn't want to put the money up at the table. That's the case. This is just dealing with the public road.
Right. Hallelujah. Yeah, talk to John.
Anything else to tell them? Okay.
Sorry, Mr. President.
It's okay.
Hallelujah.
August 3rd Avenue, wait.
Yeah, all right. Good thing it wasn't on the side.
See, all the people over here in this room, I had them for about three months myself in my community meeting, so, except it was just me trying to defend them all.
Letter dated August 7, 2012 from Chief Financial Officer advising that your honorable body must certify by resolution that the governing body has familiarized themselves with the contents of the 2011 annual audit report and have reviewed as a minimum the general comments and recommendations section of the audit.
Any comments?
We already signed this.
Oh, please, sir.
Last week.
I'm close.
I'll keep to the audit reports.
Any comments?
Letter dated August 7, 2012 from Chief Financial Officer requesting to amend the 2013 state fiscal year cap ordinance adopted July 24, 2012 specifically to revise the amount of the increase to $4,184,168 compared to the original amount of $4,378,680.80.
Any comments?
Letter dated July 10, 2012 from the Director of Health and Human Services requesting that your honorable body consider approving a resolution authorizing payment to the Elizabeth Board of Education for custodial, security, and bus services for SOAR summer program at the Nicholas Murray Butler School, number 23, which offers academic and recreational activities for youth age 6 to 13 for the period July 2, 2012 through August 10, 2012 in the amount of $22,380.
Any comments?
Letter dated July 24, 2012 from the Director of Health and Human Services requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to accept grant funds for continuation of the Elizabeth Municipal Alliance for the period January 1, 2013 to December 31, 2013 in the amount of $77,856.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated August 2, 2012 from the Director of Health and Human Services requesting authorization to enter into an agreement between City of Elizabeth Department of Health and Human Services and the Elizabeth Board of Education to provide nursing services to 1,488 students enrolled in six non-public schools in the city for the period September 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013. The city will receive $109,130.
Any comments?
Letter dated July 24, 2012 from the Director of Health, I mean, of Recreation requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the Union County Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Kids Recreation Trust Fund to replace the pool at the Earth Slater Recreational Center for an amount not to exceed $500,000.
Put it on.
Yeah, they're gonna redo the pool at the Earth Slater Center. It's the only pool we have left in the city, and we'd like to maintain that there.
Letter dated August 1, 2012 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents with Bloomberg philanthropy, yeah, sponsor of the 2012 Mayor Challenge Competition for cities with populations of at least 30,000 residents in an amount not to exceed $5 million.
Any comments? Hopefully get some of it. That'd be nice. $5 million. Put it on.
Letter dated August 2, 2012 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization for the proper city officials to reprogram unexpended community development block grant balances from program years 2008 through 2010 to a holding account for the following agencies: Community Investment Strategies, $18,878.75; Millennium Mentorship Program, $7,840; Urban League, the Family Center, $16,000, totaling $42,718.75.
Any comments?
Going through a holding account.
Going through a holding account.
That's funny, one of them is CIS.
That was money that wasn't spent.
$42,000.
Maybe they needed it.
Yeah, right. That's what I'm thinking is, they didn't spend it?
Probably a specific project.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated August 3, 2012 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting that your honorable body consider approving an urban enterprise zone proposal utilizing zone assistance funds to fund the Customer Service Skills Training Initiative Program Phase 5 in the amount of $148,952.
Any comments? I know they've been doing a good job in terms of training people and getting people placed at the mall, make different jobs, so, this is a very good work well program. That's good to see. Any other comments?
Letter dated August 6, 2012 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting to amend the resolution dated December 14, 2010 with the Elizabeth Development Company to provide funds for the First Street Commercial Construction Project specifically to reallocate $126,050 from the First Street Commercial Construction Project to the Brand New Day Renaissance Apartments Project.
Any comments?
Letter dated August 7, 2012 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting to amend the resolution dated December 14, 2010 authorizing a community development block grant agreement with the Elizabeth Development Company in the amount of $600,000 specifically to reprogram $148,950 of the remaining balance of $275,000 from Community Development Block Grant Year 36, the First Street Commercial Construction Project to the Retail Skills Center Project.
Any comments?
Man, do you know the address of the Brand New Day project?
205 is the senior building, so the, hold on, Brandon Bay is, hold on. I believe it's 219 or 217. That's the, that's the one before.
And it does that's the way the street is?
Yeah, it's on Bonden First, right on the corner.
Bonden First? Oh, that was the one who's supposed to be in the condo?
Yes. Correct.
Any comments? Any other questions? Put it on.
I read the retail skills. Okay, letter dated August 7, 2012 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting to de-designate BFLF Land Corporation as the redevelopment for the former fine fair supermarket property between Front Street and First Street due to BFLF's failure to meet the financial needs of the project as specified in Article 4, Section 4.01 in the project under Section C of the redevelopment agreement.
Any comments? Hopefully this, doing this will help move this project forward.
Hopefully somebody else out there will grab onto it.
Grab onto it and get that, especially for residents who've been really dying for a supermarket down in that area.
Way overdue.
So, now we're gonna have a supermarket?
No, no, no. What we're doing is we're taking the previously designated developer out.
Taking out.
So, this is back open to whoever wants to get it.
Who was the developer?
BFLF.
Who was that?
It was a combination of...
And it was a combination of people.
What, a combination, EDC, SCC? Island Holdings, it was like four, three or four...
Was Siopra's involved in this?
They were going to be the end result, the supermarket.
I believe so. They didn't have any play in it before the end result?
I don't think they were the developers.
So, they were gonna purchase the property?
They were gonna be...
Any other comments? Okay.
Letter dated July 31, 2012 from the Director of Public Works requesting permission from your honorable body to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached for the removal and disposal of debris from said properties in the amount of $31,321.36.
Any comments?
There's been a lot of cleaning. They've been very busy lately. A lot of vacant, these are all mostly vacant properties. But it's important, you know, that they keep these properties clean.
Keep playing road, you got it, good. $1,100 bucks. Yeah, right. See that?
Public Works has been excellent. I see the crews out there right there doing this. There are addresses that they're currently working on that are not on this list, but I'd like to see Public Works Department doing their stand and job.
You can see based on this list, they've been very busy. Any other comments?
Letter dated July 16, 2012 from the Planning Board requesting to amend Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled "Land Development" as follows: Subsection 17.36.20C prevailing conditions and appeal. Section 17.36.30B temporary track office shall be repealed and replaced. Section 17.36.90, nonperformance, shall be amended. 17.36.100 locked dimensions shall be repealed and replaced. 17.36.110 yard dimensions... 17.36.110 yard dimensions, prohibited uses. 17.36.100, did I read that? Locked dimensions. 17.36...
160C.
Shall be amended. 17.36.160(c) minimum square footage for commercial space shall be repealed and replaced. 17.36 Schedule 3 (conditional uses, paragraph Q) shall be repealed, and 17.48 signs shall be amended.
Any comments?
Could we, could we hold off putting this thing on and give us at least a chance to read through?
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. President, has this been reviewed by the law department or?
It hasn't been reviewed by me. I'm not sure if anyone else in the law department has.
Since I've been on City Council, I've been saying that with regard to legal matters, that they should be reviewed by the city attorney's office before they come to us, and this is a substantial revision of the law, the ordinance. So I would recommend that it be relayed to the city attorney's office for the comments.
Yeah, apparently the city attorney was sent the copy. I don't know. I believe that once they do this, they have to send it to us.
Correct, but it would at least be advisable for someone from the city attorney's office in case we reviewed it. This is our opinion on it.
And this, at this meeting, that's, we can do that.
Okay.
Is request that reviewed. Thank you.
This was already reviewed by the planning board.
But not by our city attorneys.
The attorney is always involved with them anyway. The attorney is always sits with them.
No, they have their own attorney.
We have the only attorney.
It's the planning board.
That's not our attorney. It's not the city attorney.
Not the city attorney.
Yeah, planning board attorney, which is paid by the taxpayer.
Yeah, but they're not the city's attorney.
And it's not council's attorney.
He means council. So he's got to be, like, come on without a visa.
Third round wanted an attorney for the city council.
It'd separate everything.
I'm just asking for us to hold it so.
Can we go? Yeah, I mean, we can, we can hold it, so this way it gives us all an opportunity to look at it, review it, and also at the same time then the attorney can take a look at it. Like I said, I don't know if it has or does not. Or find out. I know that I, I haven't personally.
But are you going to look at it and then put it on for the last meeting because we got the end of month?
No rush on this, buddy.
Yeah, I don't know if there is any urgency.
I don't think there is, or else we would've gotten this a long time ago. I know, I, I heard Victor talking about doing this for years. And never got it. Now we can, we can look at it.
Yeah, we'll hold it off, but we'll put it on for the next agenda meeting, the next, our next regular conference. Okay? All right, okay.
I would only like to know how it affects the residents. The people, the people that have single-family homes in R2, R3, and R4 zones. In other words, if they choose to, um, make it a two-family, a three-family, or a four-family out of a one-family with keeping an existing wall up, an existing wall, and then building and knocking down and building up, do they just need a letter? Or do they need to go through zoning? Because it's my opinion, or I shouldn't say my opinion, it was my understanding that all you needed was a letter that specified you live in R1, 2, 3, 4 zone, and that you didn't have to go for a zone, uh, for a zoning approval. Because I don't know if we should actually be charging people, um, against the fees and changing that when they could just produce the letter, the city could just produce the letter and say, it's okay, you can do it.
I think when you say produce, that means a zoning review versus being going before the zoning.
Exactly. Yeah, let me know, because if there's a charge, I need to know. If the existing law has been be changed in any way to hinder people from doing that, then I need to know that.
Okay, so we'll hold this one until then, and we'll put it back on and discuss it at that time. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Letter dated August 6, 2012 from the Planning Board recommending the amendment of the redevelopment plan for the Durant Street redevelopment area.
Any comments?
Letter dated July 11, 2012 from the Police Director requesting to establish and delete handicap parking spaces. Fifth Ward, 63 Jefferson Avenue, personalized. First Ward, 408 Franklin Street and 405 Elizabeth Avenue.
408 is fine. 405, if we can hold that one, please.
Third Ward, 618 Wyoming Avenue.
Yeah, Landa, if you look at the letter from Officer Frank, it says recommend for disapproval.
The letter?
Yes.
Why does he have it on true?
He has it recommend for disapproval. It's an error, apparently, from the director's office.
Okay. Let me find it.
I, I spoke with Officer Man about this. We're in agreement that it should be disapproved.
Disapproval, okay.
So we're not going to figure on it all, correct?
No. Okay, deletions on 19 Rankin Street and 528 Marshall. Letter dated August 1, 2012 from the Police Director requesting permission to establish handicap parking spaces and deletion. Fifth Ward, 1024 Emma Street, personalized. 933 Meredith Avenue, okay, and 10 Boyo Political. Disapprove 15 Loden Street and deletions 856 Bond Street and 154 South Park. Letter dated July 20, 2012 from the Fire Director requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept and sign all appropriate documents for the 2012 FEMA staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grants to allow the fire department to hire 25 additional firefighters in an amount not to exceed $3 million.
Hallelujah.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated 16, 2012 from Joshua Lamont Sisson, 500 Cherry Street, Elizabeth, is requesting that your honorable body consider appointing Kenneth Constable.
Yeah, I, I've spoken with the young man, and I've also reviewed his resume, and I would urge my colleagues to support appointing him as constable.
I think he has been living in the city like seven years or something.
You did that for a registered voter.
A registered voter?
Registered voter.
Yeah.
I think that's the three years.
Three years.
How many years?
Three years.
Okay, we have, um, letter dated July 2 from, uh, the City Treasurer with his treasury report of receipts and dispersments for the month of April 2012 and a statement of bank balances and investments as of April 30, 2012. May 2012 and a statement of bank balances and investments as of May 31, 2012. Also, uh, his receipt for dispersments for June 2012 and a statement of bank balances and investments as of June 30, 2012. You also have the Fair Rental Housing Board news as of March 21, 2012.
Okay, can everyone just sign this? They have receipts in your package. We had the, um, the men with the gun crowd yesterday, and we turn it back to the city clerk. Everyone should have like this here. They have the council that signed.
What happened? Yeah, I'm collecting.
Put a ten dollar, please?
Yeah.
I don't know what I have. Okay, you have one.
I have a twenty also.
Yeah, you have a twenty.
Who else has another? You have a ten, aren't you?
This is yours.
No, I got a twenty and a five.
What about you?
This is yours.
Can't be your thing.
Yeah. I'm broke. They didn't let us to pay for me. There you go. Same. Tony's got all that cash.
Good night, everybody. Okay, see you guys tomorrow. They have changed, I hear, the bean counter has a whole lot of change.
Lot of silver.
He has to read the state.
I gotta read the state. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, L 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the government body wishes to discuss a matter all within the eternity client privilege, minutes will be kept and once the matter involving confidentiality of the vote no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting.
I need a motion to go into closed session. So move, move the second in, roll call.
Okay. Councilman Zakkus.
Aye.
Councilman Broda.
Aye.
Councilman Pean.
Aye.
Councilman Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez. P S E N G Elizabeth Avenue Streetscape with Classic One poll.
Those were together, and they were helping.
But I don't have a problem putting them on because I understand the costs involved. It'd be more expensive to do the other polls.
Okay.
But I still haven't got the answer. And Tony, I asked you this.
All right, don't put them on.
No, 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 no.
You have to get the answer.
I got the answer. I got the answer to this, but I'd like to know what does that Elizabeth Avenue face, what is it? It's in there.
It's the Elizabeth Avenue Streetscape project.
No, no, no. We took the money from another.
All right, let me see what this says.
I'm not sure if it was the same, uh, resolution. No, it was, it was, um... I'm sorry. It was U E Z money that was, we had removed from Elizabeth Avenue Phase 4 Streetscape. And we used that. It wasn't for this, but it was a separate, it was a separate question.
Oh, okay.
We'll find out, tell you what that was. Elizabeth Avenue Streetscape or something like that, Phase 4.
Wasn't that for the poll for the lights?
No, 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 no. This is totally separate thing. That, this issue, I'm fine with you. We'll put this on.
What did you want to know?
We canceled, we were getting rid of some monies that had been allocated, U E Z dollars.
Sure.
Yes.
Did I cancel?
Money from, um, Phase 4 Streetscape, and I wanted to find out what that meant, what, what, so. I never got the answer to that question, but it was, it was the same meeting as this.
I think that was a different, uh...
It was a $600,000 thing.
Yeah, we were...
You want to hold it?
No, not this.
It was a different item.
It was a different item, right, but it was the same night.
The same night, right.
So this, I got the answer for, uh, Yolanda, so we can put that on.
Okay.
It's the separate thing that I never got the answer.
Yeah, I remember that.
But it's not there.
I may have.
It's not this.
I may have that, um, in my other file. I'll check.
What we were doing was we were closing out U E Z dollars that weren't getting spent, I guess weren't going to get spent with any year. Realocating them to other things, I guess, and I never got the answers to what that was.
These are good. Those are fun.
Yeah, you were here.
Yeah, you were here. They're old timers, these.
The rent control ordinance, uh, will be expiring December 31st.
We already extended.
I thought we said that we were gonna extend it.
We already extended, hello?
No.
Yes, we did, before, when we had Newton City Government Day, we extended whatever for a couple of years. Steve Shaver was here.
Also, Mr. Questa brought it up at our last meeting, and we agreed to talk about it at this meeting.
It was brought up in the Newton City Government. And Steve was there.
Right. Looking the month of May.
Why is he still calling Councilman Questa?
Right, he's calling Councilman Questa about it.
I thought we put it on for both. Maybe we want to extend it.
Let's put it on.
Put it on. I thought we raised that. Maybe we never got to put it on, but we definitely talked about it.
Check the month of May.
Yeah, okay.
I remember we brought it up. That's why I wrote you this note, but I don't know.
What else?
That's it?
That's it. That's it, okay. Good, now we'll do the once around.
Pass.
Pass.
Councilman Keenan. Councilman's...
I just, I just have one question. You've sent the letter to CIS on July 26. Asking them to be here tonight.
Right.
No response?
Yeah, they've, they've responded and we're working on a date.
Okay. That's all?
Yeah. No. Anything else, Councilman?
Nope.
Councilman Mazza?
I need to know, uh, we have a park, an Endicott Park in 704 Fourth Avenue, who does it belong to, please? And then, uh, phone number, electrical phone number 63508 EL 706, Fourth Avenue. They place a new pole, they broke the concrete, they clean up the concrete, and there's a huge hole. If somebody falls, we're gonna sue who? The city of Elizabeth? That gives them the permission to do that, because they were supposed to come back. It's been a year now. Tony, it's on Fourth Avenue. It's a nice, and if people trips, I happen to present. 706 Fourth Avenue. I happen to present to fill up, so, but now the sand is going down with the rain. I'm not gonna present no more with the request the ones before. So this is a public, uh, public service job. They put a brand-new pole, you know, one of those 35 poles that I got on six wards. So we gotta make sure the company comes back and do the concrete repair. If something happens, the city becomes liable because we authorize them to do the work on my, on people's property.
We are hard.
But again, then, then, then you sue the city, but we're gonna sue the city, because they don't want to get the money. Then you go after public service. That's it.
Anything else, Councilman?
That's it.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
So maybe.